We have this guy.
I'm gonna go.
Okay. Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Reverend Monsignor Peter Rowell from Saint Peter Chanel Catholic Church to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you very much and greetings from Saint Peter Chanel. As you know, that most of the Christian community is in the season of Lent in this time and it's preparation for the Great Week of Holy Week. And so I just take a little prayer today from the psalm prayer for the church that we use now in evening prayer. And so let us pray. "O God of our days and of our nights, make our lives blameless, Lord. Help us to do what is right, to speak what is true, that we may dwell in your tent and find rest on your holy mountain. And Lord our God, we ask your blessing upon this gathering tonight, the deliberations, decisions, the fraternity, all that takes place. And we remember now, all we do is for the common good. And as we enter now, this time, may this week and this time of penance not only give you glory, but also humble our sinful pride, contribute to the feeding of the poor. And we make our prayer in the name of the Christ who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen."
Amen.
In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate that. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Milton City Council from Monday, April 8th, 2019 to order. Suti, if you please, call roll and make any special general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 8th, 2019 regular meeting. We would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating that you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Just want to take a second and welcome everybody here tonight. Welcome and glad to have our Graduate Citizens Government Academy members here and also friends and family of John McPhail. Thank you for being here. Suti, if you'll please sound the next item, the approval of the agenda.
Next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 19068.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as read.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Kuntz. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It's unanimous, Suti. Do we have any public comment tonight?
We don't have any general public comments.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. If you'll please read those items.
First item is approval of the March 18th, 2019 city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 19069. Approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending February 2019, agenda item number 19070. Next is approval of a change order number two to a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and InterDev LLC, agenda item number 19071. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Quintech Solutions, Inc. for the demolition project at 983 Lackey Road, also known as 1000 Lackey Road, agenda item number 19072. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and the Mercer Group to provide consulting services for the recruitment of the Director of Public Works position, agenda item number 19073. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of easement agreements for drainage areas with West Birmingham Road Culvert Replacement Project, agenda item number 19074.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as read.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Kuntz with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So we'll move on now to reports and presentations. Suti, if you please call first item.
This first item is a proclamation honoring John McPhail for his work and service as an environmental champion in the City of Milton. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Tonight, it's an honor and a privilege to present this proclamation in the memory of John McPhail. For those of you who have volunteered or attended any of Milton's environmental events, you've probably met John. He was larger than, had a larger-than-life personality and someone who cared deeply about Milton's green spaces. Because he was also a lawyer, there was a good chance he would have convinced you to care deeply about them too. Milton was fortunate to have him devoting his time to green causes and his passing is a loss to all of us. After I finish reading this proclamation, I'm going to ask John's family and friends to come forward to present this. His son Leland's here, his daughter-in-law Martha, as well as his wife Martha. And John also, before the City of Milton was even incorporated, I had a, was fortunate to know John and Martha and considered them good friends and neighbors. In fact, our, my, our dog Camp was good friends with their dog Zeke. And John would always walk Zeke and I'd look out and he'd be in the driveway and my dog would be all excited. And John says, "Zeke wanted to come up and see Camp." So, and if Camp was ever missing, he was down at John's house. So, but anyway, so I'll read the proclamation and then we'll be, look forward to presenting it. So I have a proclamation tonight recognizing John McPhail's service to the City of Milton. Whereas, John McPhail was a passionate defender and steward of the environmental, of the environment throughout his life. And whereas, he devoted countless hours working tirelessly to protect Milton's green spaces and natural resources. And whereas, he was a leading voice for conservation in the City of Milton's earliest days and beyond. And whereas, he was a natural leader and gifted organizer and brought these skills to bear in helping create the committee that will be established by the City Council as Milton grows green. And whereas, he served as its first chairperson and held that role for many years. And whereas, in that role, he championed such topics as green building, recycling, water conservation. And whereas, he created a new generation of environmental champions by educating and mentoring others. Now therefore, with deep appreciation, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton hereby recognize John McPhail's years of selfless and dedicated service to the City of Milton. And this is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the eighth day of April 2019. And also just want to add that it's people like John, you know, everybody hears about all the great accomplishments and accolades of the City of Milton, but it's people like John that are the reason. And it's all the volunteers and people that truly care. And John just really stuck out. In fact, I'll never forget, I remember getting a call from him and said, "Come on outside." And he had a portable, some kind of recycling toilet in my driveway. Some kind of pellets and all that. And he was so excited about it. But, you know, there was just the passion there. And again, I can honestly say, we're sad to see that John is not with us right here today, but he left the world in a better place because he was here. So we're, it's an honor to present this to you guys. So if John's family and friends would please step forward and the council would join me.
Can I say, real quick, I know John was a big Virginia fan and I think he has something to do with that game the other night, so I just want to say thanks.
We need one step back.
And also while we're here tonight, I want to present you guys with a plaque that says, "John McPhail, with heartfelt gratitude for your service to the City of Milton for your tireless efforts to help Milton grow its green, Lord, I respectfully..."
If you all would just step back to the wall a little bit for me. There we go. Yes, they'll, they'll hold on this way. Just back up. Yeah, council, if you'll stand on the wall and then family, if you'll go right there. If you'll scoot it just a bit this way. And everybody take a full step this way for me. There you go. And if you'll turn your proclamation with the seals at the bottom, there you go, perfect. You just hope that's perfect. There we go. You did a great picture. Second, one right here, one, two, three, smile.
Can I step aside? Jack Garcia, panel, would you like to be up here?
Come on up.
Because we're partying.
If you'll scoot back on the end, if you'll scoot back there. Oh, okay. You're doing my work for me, that's perfect. Say no more. You need a job, I'll give you a job. It's perfect, okay. One right here again, one second. That's one, one, one right here, one, two, three, smile. Let's do that again, one, two, three. All right. I think everyone's eyes are open, we're good, thank you.
Again, thank you and thank you for John's service as well as everybody here that joined us tonight. All right, Suti, if you will please call the next, sound the next item.
The next item is recognition of Milton's Citizens Government Academy graduates, third cohort, Ms. Courtney Spriggs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you'll meet the participants of our third cohort of our Citizens Government Academy, which started in February. Every week, at different locations throughout the city, department heads have taught them about their department. They've learned about police and fire, finance, parks, community development, public works, and more. The Citizens Government Academy allows department staff to teach about their department, educate the citizens about city functions, while getting to know and learning from Milton's interested, knowledgeable, and engaged citizens. This amazing class is full of enthusiastic students who were eager to learn more about their city. They contributed a wealth of knowledge and experience, asked great questions, provided unique perspectives, and problem-solving ideas. One of them, George, who you'll meet, was even a city council member for eight and a half years. He had a lot to share. I want to thank, again, these students for choosing to spend their precious free time learning about our city. I want to thank my fellow Milton staff members for teaching their department's information. And finally, you all in city management for allowing, allowing and encouraging programs like this that build and foster the relationships that strengthen Milton's exceptional sense of community. You'll meet the rest of the class shortly, but let me introduce our class spokesperson, Jeff Dufrane. Jeff has lived in Milton less than a year and has jumped into our community with both feet. He volunteers regularly, he's a member of the Milton Historical Society, and now a Milton Citizens Government Academy graduate. I have no doubt that's just the tip of the iceberg for him, and I'll let him share that with you. Jeff is going to speak on behalf of the third class of the Milton Citizens Government Academy. Jeff, come on up.
Thanks, Courtney. Mayor, City Council, we are very pleased to be here this evening. On behalf of this year's graduating class of CGA, we want to thank you for offering this great program to us. And we in particular want to give a special shout out to Courtney and her staff. It's just a flawless clockwork machine. The, our class consisted of 13 civic-minded individuals, some new residents, some old-time Miltonians. I think we all got a better understanding of how Milton works and municipal government. We have a great appreciation for all our vital community services such as police, public services, planning, and zoning. It was also great to have classes at the different locations. At the fire station, and when I, when I saw that, those men, those people, those servants, I said, "I want to be like them when I grow up." And now with the new Pierce enforcer pumper, I was wondering if you need a driver. My wife says I'm an excellent driver. So anyway, the course taught some of us old dogs new tricks. Sharon Ferguson gave a lesson on how to compose a tweet. And however, in some cases, she might have created a monster. But anyway, we're grateful, we are all grateful for this seven-week experience and look forward to being good citizens in this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So at this point, I'm going to step forward and ask that, ask our, our graduates to meet up here and we will hand out your certificate. And again, I want to, again, this goes back to the comment I made about John, but as you guys, that's what makes Milton special and such a good place, is your willingness to give your time and efforts and gifts to get involved with the city. So often, I would say nine out of 10 times, if I ever have a citizen or somebody that maybe is frustrated with the city or has an issue or whatever, and I think you guys would confirm this, once I bring them into City Hall and they meet our staff and people involved and see the passion and whatnot and go through and see what we're all about, I think they walk away with a much better understanding. And I would assume that you guys would agree with that, so. Congratulations. Rosita? Congratulations. Jack?
Thanks, Joe.
Hello.
Jackson Gillis.
Oh.
Jeff Lind.
Here we are.
Susan?
Now I feel silly. I'm leaving.
Jeff? Jeff Jeff? George?
The best for last.
You have a missing song on purpose.
Well, they, is that okay? Would you mind? Feeling a little bit easier.
Councilor, if you will, push your mic down for me.
Hold on, you coming in here?
I'm standing on a platform and this guy still is calling.
Maybe the first time I've been told.
You know the trick, you have to get between shelters. Okay, so if you're on the floor, the two ends here are where we're going to stop, those here, I want you to get in between shelters. So you're going to stand in between individuals on the wall. So if you'll scoot around and you're like right in here, I'm going to come touch you. No, no, you're fine. All the walls fine.
I told you guys, she does this to everybody.
Picture we need is a this right here.
You need a video, a video of trying to organize this.
And if you'll get in your own wall, turn sideways, turn inwards. There's, there's a method to madness. There's a method to madness. Okay, so now, if you're on the floor, take a half a step this way, just a half a step, everybody. Yes, so if you'll hold your crock right, if you'll hold it with the front, you can open it, yep, absolutely. If you'll flip it all the way back, that way, it doesn't obstruct you.
I read a book.
Horse up, we're good. And if you're on the back row, you can just sort of hold it down so it doesn't structure beautiful faces. Okay, we're almost there. Thank you, Council, for being patient. Courtney, if you will return this way, we'll be perfect. Yep, perfect, yep. All right, we're looking good, okay. Right here. One more second. All right, going right here, one, two, three, smile. Let's do that again, one, two, three, smile, everybody. One more. Sorry, I see, no, eyes, eyes are closed. Okay, everybody say, "Good governance." Here we go. Yeah, we're good, thank you. Patience is a virtue.
Well done, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is our first presentation. Sudi, if you'll please lead, read those items.
First item is consideration of RZ 1814, B.C. 1809, 3475, 3485, 3495, 3499, and 3501, Bethany Bend, by Bayesian American Properties, to rezone from TR and AG1 to TR to develop fifty-four residential units condominium at a density of six-point-three-eight units per acre and a three-part concurrent variance. Two, number one, delete the seventy-five-foot undisturbed buffer and ten-foot improvement setback, and replace with a twenty-foot landscape buffer or fifty-foot undisturbed stream buffer adjacent to all property lines abutting property-zoned Townhost House Residential TR, Section 64, 1091B. And two, to delete the requirement for seventy-five percent per vertical wall plane of brick or natural stone, Section 64, 10950. And three, to delete requirement for twenty-five percent brick, tile, and remaining materials listed, Section 64, 1095P. Agenda item number nineteen zero zero six, first presentation was at the January seventh, two thousand nineteen City Council meeting. This was deferred back to the Planning Commission at the January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen City Council meeting. Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Six, Division Six, Cellphones and Other Electronic Devices. Agenda item number nineteen zero seven five, our third and final first presentation item, is consideration of an ordinance to revise Chapter Forty-Six, Article Three, Division Four, Section Forty-six dash one-two-three, acceptance by company to make minor administrative changes, including updating the address of City Hall, Agenda item number nineteen zero seven six.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation items?
I'll make a, I'll go ahead with it.
Ms. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the first presentation as read.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, and a second, Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are, we have no items under our public hearing or zoning agenda. Before I move on to unfinished business, as some of you know, I have got to exit or leave the meeting tonight, I'm going to pass it over to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Jamison, too. All right. Since there's no public hearing, no zoning agenda, we'll move to unfinished business. Sudi?
First item is consideration of an ordinance to revise Article Three, Officers and Employees, Division Two, Travel and Meal Expenditure Policy, Agenda item number nineteen zero six zero. First presentation was at the March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen City Council meeting. Mr. Sam Traeger.
What we have before you tonight is a revision to our ordinance on, related to travel and expense policy, meal expenditure policy. What this basically requests is, that we're asking for it to be put under the discretion of the city manager to revise the policy as needed, so we can more effectively and efficiently manage it. We've gone ahead and proposed a policy that city manager is looking at adopting. It very closely mirrors the original ordinance. We've made a couple of slight changes. The primary one is use of personal vehicles for travel when there is a city vehicle available. We're going to follow the general services agencies pricing, or their plan on how many, on the mileage rate that they operate on, under. So that's going to be the primary change from what our current policy, how's our current policy is drafted. Everything else pretty much remains the same. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
So, usually when something comes up like this, there's an issue that causes the change. I haven't seen an issue that would cause this change. It looks to me like it's just being more efficiency-related, is that it? And so maybe-
It is more efficiently, efficiency-related, but as I mentioned, one of the primary things that we've seen is employees taking their personal vehicle when a city vehicle is available, or paying it the full IRS rate. This would lower the rate that we're reimbursing for mileage when that happens. And that was our, that was one of the drivers actually going for implementing this.
How much do you think we would save on that change?
It changes from fifty-eight cents a mile to twenty cents a mile. I don't, we never ran the numbers on how much, how many miles employees are putting in each year.
And so also, this is going from a code to a policy, right?
Yes, sir.
It's the first time we've done that since I've been on here, as far as that goes. Explain the difference between the two, so everybody kind of knows.
The, what I see, this would give us more flexibility if it was under the discretion of the city manager. Ordinances require two reads, if we wanted to make a change. I've been working on the travel policy for a couple of months, probably. This would give us more efficiency in doing it. Ken probably has a better answer for that than I do, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but-
Yeah, Councilor Coons, it's simply a matter of the formality of adoption. An ordinance is something that has due process considerations, something that's read out in the open. A policy is less formal, by now. With respect to employees, it's quite enforceable because it's enforced by the city manager, but with respect to an ordinance, it's generally considered to be applicable to the public. That's ordinances or manifestations of the police power. Candidly, a policy like this should not be an ordinance, it should be a policy. My respectful thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Open up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem will make a motion that we approve Agenda item number one-nine-dash-zero-six-zero.
Second?
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Coons, and a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, Sudi, next item?
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Six, Division Three, to revise the city's budgetary policy regarding budget stabilization, resources, and utilization of prior year's fund balance. Agenda item number nineteen zero six one, first presentation was at the March eighteenth City Council meeting, Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. In two thousand seventeen, two years ago, we amended the fund balance policy to change the fund balance, minimum fund balance level from sixteen percent, which is the recommendation from the Georgia Finance Officers Association, to increase it to twenty-five percent. It also was based off of, previously based off of operating expenditure budget for the next fiscal year, and we changed that to be based then now off of the operating revenues for the next fiscal year. It's just basically allowing us to strengthen our financial position, and also, it was creditable to getting our AAA rating whenever we went out for bond rating. The one thing we missed when we were doing this was, was the little part in the budgetary policy that spoke to prior year's fund balance, and it gave a definition in there of the sixteen percent. We want to change that to reflect back to the fund balance policy and kind of clean up some of the language, and so that's all we're doing here, is simply making both policies mirror each other.
Any questions? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda item number nineteen dash zero six one.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, and a second from Councilmember Longoria. I have a motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, it's unanimous?
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A, Parks and Recreation Fees and Other Charges, Chapter Thirty-four, Section Twenty-four of the Milton City Code, Agenda item number nineteen zero six two. First presentation was at the March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen City Council meeting, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. What we have before you is a proposal to change our pricing for admission to the Milton City Pool. You may recall, last year, we put together the pool program when we had a combination of passes, daily passes as well as family passes. And we actually sold well over twenty-five thousand dollars in passes. And we are preparing the pool again for use this year, and we went back through some of the feedback we got from people who used the pool last year. And so we've made a couple of proposed changes here. The first introduces a single rate, a single-person rate of seventy-five dollars, and it also offers a senior citizen rate of fifty-five, which the planned activity to promote would be fifty-five if you're fifty-five. And also, we add a third combo pass for up to seven people in a family, and that was simply to clean up a loophole that we unintentionally created last year if the family was larger than six. So, that's what simply looking to do is responding to the feedback that we got from the people who used the pool this year, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Is there, we don't have any limits on the amount of people that can buy these passes, right?
I'm sorry, sir, can I hear you?
We don't have any limits as far as how many people can buy the passes, right?
Oh, no, 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 we, we encourage anyone to buy as many passes as they want.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, just curious.
Yeah, these are, these are the seasonal passes we're talking about.
Right, right.
Also available for out-of-city residents?
Yes, and there's the fifty percent out-of-city fee on top of that. That's the standard practice with all of our programming.
Any other questions? All right, open up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem will make a motion to approve Agenda item number one-nine-dash-zero-six-two.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Coons, and a second from Councilmember Bentley, a motion to approve Agenda item one-nine-dash-zero-six-two, all in favor?
Aye.
It was shocking.
Did I not say Cookerly?
He said Bentley. I actually said something.
You know what? Let's let it open up, you'll make the motion then.
Well, good?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much. Go Cavaliers.
All right, Sudi, new business?
Under new business, our first item is consideration of a resolution to dispose of certain golf cart easements across private parcels abutting the former Milton Country Club property. Agenda item number nineteen zero seven seven, Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director, and today I'm here to present you a resolution that will abandon the golf cart easements located on the former Milton Country Club property to benefit the neighboring property owners. As you all know, when the city acquired this property in early two thousand eighteen, a number of easements were located on the property. So the city abandoned the golf course easements in summers of two thousand eighteen, that's June of two thousand eighteen. And after that, a few property owners contacted the city, and they wanted to know the status of the golf cart easements. So before we started the process, we contacted each and every property owners who will be impacted, and the feedback was fairly positive. We basically sent out the letters to each and every property owners. So in the next few slides, you will basically see the easements which will be abandoned, their locations. So these maps will basically show the easements in red, in pink, over here. So these are the easements which are getting abandoned. There will, there will be about twenty-two property owners that will benefit from this process. This is the picture which you can see from this High Grove Road. This is the picture of these two easements. Again, it's hard to see on these maps, so we have basically circled the easements which will be abandoned by this red circle. Again, over here. Some other pictures of these golf cart easements. Some property owners have already started erecting their own barriers. So, we are abandoning all the easements except the easement which is located on Lot Number Thirty-four, and that's based on the recommendation of our city's facilities manager, who would like to use this easement because of the maintenance purposes of the golf course. So right now, as you can see, this is Lot Thirty-four over here, and this is the easement. The property which is adjacent to this Lot Number Thirty-four is basically wetlands, and the facilities manager will not be able to carry his lawnmower across this. So for the time being, we want to use this easement so that we can basically carry our maintenance equipment through the golf course. But as the process, as the planning process moves on, we will be having some solutions for this place, and at that time, we can look to abandon this easement. Any questions?
Councilmember Bentley?
My question is, once the easements are abandoned, then the property owner has the right to do anything with that concrete that they choose to?
Yes, so this is basically a lot of, many property owners contacted us, and they wanted to know the status, whether the city will be removing the concrete or not. So this is, the way we see it, it's like it's phase one. We are working with the property owners to abandon the easements. We expect the cost will be around half a million dollars to remove the concrete, which we are not moving at this stage. But again, this is the phase one to abandon the easements, so maybe at some later stages, the city or the property owners can think of removing the concrete.
But nothing is, nothing is prohibiting them from removing the concrete at this point, once the easements are abandoned?
It's their property.
It's their property.
Once, once we abandon those easements, they, as long as it's legal use, they can, they can do what they want.
Okay, and a simple question is, an easement, is it just the concrete, or is it-
Concrete.
Also, right away on each side of it, is it the concrete?
It's my understanding it's only the concrete.
Okay.
And these plaques basically show the exact location of those easements, but it's only the concrete.
Okay, thank you.
So, it doesn't really matter what they are, if we're giving them up, if we're abandoning them, whatever they were, is gone, so.
So this is phase one. Do we know when we're going to actually, the city will, because I know those are the questions that will come up next, is when will we start actually removing the concrete?
So, that's going to be a decision that this council is going to have to make. If you're ever going to want to foot the bill for removing the concrete, that will be, that will be part of the planning process. It's, it's not a given.
That's going to be somebody else's property.
Let's tend about to contradict me.
No, I'm not about to contradict, I'm about to amend you. I guess my question is, are we talking about removing the concrete on private property?
Right, it's, once we, once we give up the easements, it's not ours anymore.
Yeah, I'm going to be very reluctant. Yeah, I guess I'm heartening back to when we first had the discussion when we were acquiring the property, there was a lot of concern saying, "Okay, you can, you can give us back the property, you leave the, you leave that cement pathway there," which was there for a purpose when it was a golf course, then the concern is, that still becomes property visually that people are going to go and walk on. So we abandoned it, we give them the legal, you know, terms that it's their property again, but I just know that was a big discussion point when we had all the residents that owned property that had the sidewalks on it, or the cart path.
So we worked through this with, with other legal representation in Ken's office, and there is less of a concern, we would just need some type of agreement later on. Um, and there is less of a concern, we would just need some type of agreement later on to be able to, with the homeowner, if you choose to be able to remove the, uh, the cement car path, we can do so with their blessing. Um, it may be a temporary easement or, or whatever it is we need to enter into. But the reality is, is we wouldn't likely be prepared to be able to remove these, these paths for quite some time. And in the meantime, there are people that are trying to sell their homes and other things, and they wanted to see these easements disappear. Um, so we're trying to, to do the best with what we have in this situation.
Any other questions, Matt?
I was gonna ask the same thing, why it wasn't reversed, you know, so that was, that was the same thing. If that makes sense.
So, so it doesn't prohibit us in the future from entering into an agreement if the homeowners say they want us to, and if we, in fact, as a council, look and say we're willing to appropriate funds as part of the purchase of that, that park or part of the improvement, that's on the road, that's not anything that's a given at this point?
I'm gonna have to turn to Ken, because I can feel the steam coming off him.
Well, no, I just, I just wanna be, be careful, there, there is a difference between a right of entry to do that, us having the permission to get on private property, and then doing public work on private property.
Right.
Um, but again, I'm sure the city manager and I can, can talk about it and get to what we wanna get to. I just, I'm thinking more about what my office may have said to you candidly, I don't know if they told you the right thing.
I'm sure they did, I will, I'm sure I'm re-laying it incorrectly, so I will find out.
No, I mean, I, no, I get it, I mean, I do understand that this is an issue, and that they, you know, candidly, the prospect of having to, to independently take out a interconnected concrete path through your property could be a formidable expense. I get that, and I certainly can see us wanting to, to be mindful of that in sort of our, I don't know if it'd be promises kept or whatever, to those citizens. I just wanna make sure that the City of Milton does all things lawfully, that's my only objective. That's my only concern.
And I would not want us to do anything.
And, and I'm not hearing anything different from anybody up here, of course.
Ken, would you recommend putting this off for, for, till the next meeting? I, I don't, I don't know that two weeks is going to make or break anything in this, but, um, if you have, if you have reserve concerns, I just wanna make sure that the council.
Would, would you all mind doing that? I think I would rather feel more comfortable about, because once we give up these easements, and candidly, you know, even after you authorize it, we still have to issue some quitclaim deeds, we've gotta, we've gotta actually come up with the deeds. So I don't know that y'all couldn't go ahead and, and move forward on authorizing the deeds to be prepared and given to the mayor this evening. We just might wanna think about it a little more before we actually sign them.
So what are we, uh, may I want to follow through, or actually, Councilmember Kirkery, do you have a question?
Could I just pursue that as we go down, and I, I like the direction. How long are these paths that we're talking about?
I mean, don't they meander all throughout the periphery of the golf course?
No, 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 no.
For every homeowner, it's probably a hundred feet or less.
Yeah, so there are twenty-two property, there are twenty-two property owners which will benefit from this process. It's around four to five feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
And it can go up to a couple of miles or something, it's, as you're saying, it basically goes around the whole golf course.
Okay.
Carol's question, and I'll answer it.
No, I, I'm, we're looking at specific.
Yeah, I do not know the length, but we can always get back with you with the length.
So if we're trying to help a couple of specific homeowners who may have some desires of things that they wanna do with their homes, is there, is there a way to move forward and erect some sort of a structure over the path so that it's clear what's gonna happen, like a, a fence at that point, or demolish part of it that would then lead towards their home and keep the easement intact until another point? I mean, is there any middle ground here?
Yeah, I thi- I think there probably is, that's why I think it might be helpful. Again, I, I think I'm gonna be Mayor Protam comfortable with y'all taking action this evening on the authorization. But I'm gonna wanna speak with Parag and the city manager about what implementation actually looks like, because if we're gonna go out there and manipulate ground, chop up concrete, do anything, I wanna do it while we still have an interest in the, in the ground itself, as opposed to once we've relinquished.
Go.
So the question I have is, we've got homeowners that have been sitting on this issue for the better part of a year and a half, okay? And I think if we were to ask them, would you want us to abandon the easement today or delay this and wait until we can figure out what to do with the sidewalk or the cart path? I think they'd say, abandon the easement, we'll take care of our own property. So I'm just, I'm just thinking that.
Well, that's even the best of all possible works.
Right, because.
I just, that wasn't what I was hearing. What I was hearing was, let's get rid of the city's interest in this piece of property and then go do a public works construction project on it. That's what was causing it.
I'm not trying to speak for the property owners. I, I just know that they've been dealing with this issue for some time, and I think it's better for us to resolve it than it is to let it linger.
But, and I, and I guess my question is, going back to the history that you've had with all the meetings, because there've been a lot of meetings with those homeowners, because they're the ones who are interested, maybe you could tell us really what, what you've heard or what was discussed from the city with those property owners? That's the part I, because we, I, we weren't privy to all those meetings, we've heard some, right?
People generally want the, um, they all want the easement removed, and they also want the cement, the, the pavement removed.
That's what I thought.
Um, and they want it done yesterday.
That's what I thought.
So it's, it's, it's a matter of, it's a matter of, uh, of the phasing in which we're going to do this. You're, you're going to recognize economy of scale if we're going to construct the new, the new path that's going to be more internal to the property, you're gonna recognize economies of scale when you construct that at the same time as removing the other one. Um, so there are benefits to releasing it now and then, uh, and then removing it if that's what you so choose to do later. However, it does add the wrinkle that Ken is talking about, you'll now be taking public dollars and doing work on a, uh, on private property. And, um, so I understand where you're coming from with that.
I just think that's gonna, that will be a question that those property owners are gonna be asking us. Okay, you've, you've abandoned it, when are you gonna take care of this? If they're interested, if everybody's changed their mind and they wanna take care of it themselves, I have no problem saying, let's abandon it. But that's not what I heard when we were having all these discussions earlier. Even when we acquired, when we were looking at acquiring the property, that was a concern from day one, that's what I thought I heard.
Councilmember Bentley, you have a question?
Yeah, no, that was, I'm just restating that, the, I was wondering how many people would take advantage of just having the easement and taking care of the, the issue themselves. Um, and we don't have a feel for that. I know we have one person here, so, um.
So, as you initially mentioned, we did contact each and every property owner. Before we started the process, a letter went out in, uh, January of this year, saying that the city is interested in abandoning the, these easements, please come and talk to us. Uh, few people called us, and we did explain that we are in the process of abandoning the easements as phase one, but we are not looking to, uh, remove the concrete. So they were, as Councilmember you are saying, they were sort of okay, so they were like, yes, at least the easements can be abandoned at this stage, because they were trying to sell their properties. And once you're trying to sell your property, this easement was having an issue. So they were like, okay, so let's abandon the easement, and then we can talk to some, some individual property owners will be looking to, will be looking to the city to get rid of the concrete, and some will be looking, they can get their own concrete removed. So it's a mixed bag.
So, I, I just see it as a, the city didn't put the concrete there, okay? We bought the property, the property included the easements. The property included the concrete too, but included the easements on top of the concrete. We have a right to just keep everything that we purchased, all right? There's nothing that compels us to give up anything. But I think in the best interest of our citizens, it makes sense for us to give back an easement that all its real purpose is, is to provide access to a cart path that's no longer needed because it's not a golf course anymore. I think that it makes sense for us to just do that and not worry about the cart path. The cart path is just that. I, I don't see that we're compelled to take care of one problem before we take care of the other. And I think if the property owners knew that this could take us another year to figure out, they'd say, forget it.
Any other questions?
So Ken, when you get uncomfortable, I take heed on that end, but usually, in this case, do you think that if we had, if we were to pass this today, that your office can come up with some kind of agreement with individual homeowners on the city being protected while we remove concrete on someone else's property?
Councilmember Coons, I, we'll look, we'll look into it. Again, I'm, I feel like I'm coming a little bit late to the party, I suspect there has been more activity between my office and staff, that there may have already been, some of this row has been hosed already. So, well, here's what I'd recommend, go ahead and approve, if the council's obviously is comfortable with it. This resolution that's in front of you is a resolution that authorizes the abandonment of what is called unusually shaped pieces of property. It's a specific provision in Georgia law that allows governments to dis- dispose of property interests without a formal bid process. That's what's, candidly, that's what's driving the formality anyway. Typically, a government can't get rid of property without putting it up for public auction. So that's what you're doing, is you're taking advantage of a unique carve-out in Georgia law that says, look, we've got a little micro-interest in property that really serves nobody's interest except absorbing it into the dominant estate, which is what the easement lies on, let's authorize getting rid of it for, for candidly, no money. That's the trick, right? Because there's no compensation. Once you do that, my office will then prepare all of the necessary deeds to convey that back and get them recorded, and so then all the easement interests will be extinguished. Then we'll have this sort of winding, slithering path that we need to do something with. That's where it's breaking down for me, but maybe, uh, there has been more discussions I'm just not privy to, and we'll get there. We can probably figure it out, we may have to figure out some sort of, uh, reciprocal value to get that done. But I don't think we ought to stop the wheels of progress on this tonight, and, given that, that I'm sure I'm not privy to some of the discussions. So my recommendation would be, approve the resolution if you are inclined to do that. I'll work with the city, and we'll get these deeds out, get the, these deeds recorded.
All right, any other discussion? Because, real quick, my, my point of view is kinda with Councilmember Longoria there, because I was under the impression, once we abandon this, we're done. I mean, that's not our property, if they wanna take it out, they can take it out, and that's my impression.
So to everybody's knowledge, then the homeowners are not going to be unhappy that there's not a removal plan at this time? So, everybody's good with that?
I'm good with it, because if I'm gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on property that I planned to not own, I'd rather not spend a hundred and fifty thousand, I've already bought the property. Why do I wanna spend more money on the property if I'm not gonna keep it?
Well, I can see some interest by the property owners, particularly in giving this cleared up, because the easements are of title. And so if they're wanting to sell the property, it's, it's just easier to sell property without an encumbering of the property. So I can certainly understand them wanting some speed with getting this done.
I, I do have one quick question, do any of these easements have anything, are they, are they necessary for any of our future trail plans at the Country Club?
No.
Then, okay, I'm, I feel really good.
Uh, Lot, this Lot Thirty-four easement is the only easement which we require.
Okay.
Not only are they not, we, we couldn't use them.
Yeah, okay.
Under, under its current, under what those were for, or specific for, right?
That's right.
Matt?
Well, I, I, maybe I misunderstood the tone, um, but I do think that as we made this purchase and we dealt with the landowners that own the homes on this property, that we made it in agreement, at least I know I did, that our intent was to try to make them whole on their property on that end with these, this concrete easement. Just, if we give these easements back, I don't want us to wash our hands of this. I mean, this is something that I think, from our council perspective, we, we need to continue to maintain the intent that we had upon the purchase, which was, for these golf course easements, be willing to remove them as such, so.
That was never an understanding. When we purchased the property, we didn't say, and, and I don't understand the concept of making a property owner whole, other than giving them back an easement that we purchased.
Well, we're giving that easement back as far as it is, but we're also transforming it into a country club, or into a, into a golf, into a, well, it is a country club, but into a park as well. So that was part of the concern that a lot of the residents had, is what happens to the golf course.
The residents' primary concern is the proximity of the park to their property. If the, it, right now, the easement represents some amount of distance that separates, that, that's basically cut off of the back of their property.
True.
If they can increase that distance, they are adding buffer space between them and the park, and I think that's their biggest concern. And I, again, I don't feel like it makes any sense for us to take on a responsibility for restoring property to its pre-golf course state, because we weren't responsible for that. If we had had a hand in making Milton Country Club a country club, and if we had paid for the sidewalks or the golf carts to go in, or the golf cart paths to go in there, I would feel compelled to make, to fix it. But that's not what we did. We didn't have any part of that.
Well, okay, so it was a golf course before, and residents bought it as a golf course, and it failed as a golf course, right? So that failure, though, the city came in and we decided to use taxpayer dollars, including those residents' taxpayer dollars, to buy that property right next to them, which caused some concerns amongst many of the residents that were directly impacted by the purchase of which we had.
I think their biggest concern was, they didn't know what was gonna happen to that property if the Country Club went out of business.
Including the easement concerns that they had at that time. That was a concern that they had, what's gonna happen to those easements that are directly affecting their property that they owned, technically? Because all of a sudden, it was no longer a golf course trail, not, not, wasn't gonna be a golf, used as a golf course, it was gonna be residential property, and so they had a concern directly with that transition. So when we made the purchase, at least I did, I mean, you may not have, but I did from that perspective, I wanted to make sure that those residents that are directly impacted by the decision, we're gonna have our effort to try to get them into a place where they have that piece of that property taken care of.
I wanna make sure I understand what you just said, Matt, because it was no part of any contract that we signed that said we would restore, we would remove the golf cart paths. There was no contractual agreement between the city and anybody else to do that. Are you saying that you made representations, that that's what the city would do?
No, I'm stating that when I made the intent, that that was gonna be what I would, I anticipated future contracts coming before us, like what we have here today, that was gonna be causing these discussions that we're having right now. And so my intent from going forward with the purchase of the Milton Country Club was to continue those intent to try to make the residents near, nearby as whole as they can be. So, and obviously, you know, they bought land that became a golf course easement, they gave that part of property so that it can be a golf course path. I get that, but it's no longer that, the city enacted the transition into something entirely different. So in doing so, I think we burdened some of the responsibility of that transition of those easements. Just a different viewpoint.
I would point out that the property owners came to the city and sold it to us, we didn't go to them and buy it.
Different property, I'm talking about the residents, you're talking about the property owner of the course, I'm talking about the residents nearby that actually have the easements, which is what we're essentially giving back to.
I'm pretty sure, I, and, you know, I'm just putting myself in the place of a property owner. I want my property free and unencumbered, okay? Period, end of story. If there is an easement, I don't care what's on the easement, if the property owner that owns the easement is willing to abandon it, I'm raising my hand and I'm saying, go ahead.
Sure.
I'll deal with whatever else comes my way.
Sure. But that doesn't mean there won't be residents as well who, if we do this right now, I don't wanna have them stuck with a golf court path, cart path, and we're not willing to do anything with that.
They're, they're not stuck with it.
If we do this, okay, so Ken, if we pass this thing today.
Yes.
Right, so all of a sudden, that easement goes back to the property owners that we're talking about, right? So then, the question becomes, is if that homeowner says, what will then the city now do about the golf cart path that's a cement right there, right? We're gonna be in that decision-making process of deciding whether or not we're gonna help remove that or not. Is that what?
Oh, Ken, do you wanna answer that, and then Councilmember Moore?
I mean, if I'm wrong on that, let me know.
I mean, he's, he's waiting.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, repastion.
And I'm, I'm willing to admit if I'm wrong, I just wanna make sure I'm seeing this right.
Well, I mean, everything, I'm, I'm listening to every word that you're saying, but, but understand, I mean, once, once we prepare these deeds, and then once we sign them, the mayor will sign them, and then once they're recorded, we're done, okay? The City of Milton will therefore have extinguished its easement interest on those properties. So that's great for title, and that's great for, for cleaning up and their ability to sell, and candidly, their ability to tell people to, please leave my property, you're on, you're on my property. That's all wonderful.
True.
My only trepidation at all with this is that next step.
Yes.
Of us taking city resources, going onto property we don't own, and doing stuff. That's the only concern. Now, that doesn't mean we have to resolve that tonight. And we, I don't know that we do, but I'm just saying, that's gonna be what I'm thinking about with respect to that next step. that's going to be what I'm thinking about with respect to that next step. And I've just looked at some of the background documentation. And so what I think I can tell you comfortably is, would we have the right with the permission of the property owner to gain access back to the site? Oh, yeah. I'm not worried about access. I'm worried about the ability to do public improvements on private land.
Right.
That's the only thing that's going to be driving my interest. And, you know, so again, I'll work with that with the city manager and the council to the extent you want to, but I just want to let you know sort of my thought process.
Do you think, so do you think passage of this will inhibit us from being able to do public work on private land if a resident, if a homeowner thinks that we should?
It will present challenges.
That's why I'm clarifying this, yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay. I'm fine with what you propose, Ken. We go forward, we approve this. Basically, we clear up the abandonment. If I think back, and I've had some time to think as we've had our discourse, the biggest concern, I think, the property owners that I heard was, their fear was, if the concrete stays there, that becomes a visual line of sight that in the park, people start doing. We, in our park development down the road, we're going to do something, and I guess, I don't know what that is, to basically delineate, here's where the park property starts, you don't cross over into personal property.
Right.
And if, and that, I think, is our legal, more of a, I won't say legal obligation, that's more of the responsibility to the homeowners, if we want to make them whole or try to protect their property, more so than the removal of the concrete. But I know that was a discussion point that a lot of people came up. But I think what I remember is, they're most concerned about, if the concrete stays and you don't do anything, now people are going to think they still can walk over onto my property, and then I'm going to have to be shooing people off.
So to answer your, the question in the middle, most of the trails are going to have to be torn up, most of the cement pathways are going to have to be torn up. They're in very poor condition. So ultimately, that is, most of what you see out there is going to be torn up at some point anyway. In the short term, I would say that if people are walking on those trails, absent some type of barrier from entry, people are just going to continue walking along where the trail is. And I don't know, other than bicycle fencing or something along those lines, or the homeowner themselves erecting a fence around their property is going to prevent that.
There's another question. So Ken, we talked about some homeowners that have issues with selling the land because of this issue that we're dealing with right here, selling their homes.
And I don't know specifically. That was simply my hypothetical, saying I could see it being a problem, though, because, you know, they're doing a title search that say, hey, you've got, you've got an ingress or an access easement on your property. I'm not crazy about that.
Right. And so, so first question is, has the city as a whole, we have had direct experiences with the homeowners expressing a problem with this issue specifically? And how many homeowners are expressing this problem with this issue?
So I can say, and the reason why we started this process, because we were contacted by the property owners, I think a couple of, maybe two, that basically said that we would like to sell our properties, and we want, and this, these easements are, again, you can sell the property, but it's getting challenging. And so they were the ones who were basically helped, who requested us to move this process forward.
All right.
But it's not like out of 22, everyone was saying the same thing. It was like, we did receive issues with at least a couple of them.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I open for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to dispose of certain golf cart easements across private property parcels abutting the former Milton Country Club property.
Second.
You can take it.
No, sorry.
She seconded it.
Okay, you'll get the next one. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley and a second from Councilmember Moore to approve Agenda Item Number 19-077. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Not anymore. Well, then nay. But my discussion point will be, I wish we could actually delay this for two weeks. I just think we're doing this piecemeal.
All right. So that was a five to one. Councilmember Coons, against.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is consideration of approval of continued collection of hotel motel taxes from online travel companies by class counsel beyond December 2020 in City of Rome versus Hotels.com class action. This is Agenda Item Number 19078. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, you have in front of you this evening, basically, you're voting this evening by way of a vote of the council. So we have been involved, as have many, many jurisdictions in Georgia, with a class action involving the payment of hotel motel excise taxes by online travel companies. And we opted in with respect to a firm out of, actually, Rome, Georgia, a very good firm, Bryn Mawr, Askew Barry and Siegler. And they have sort of taken the lion's share of the administrative costs associated with litigating, and of course pursuant to a 2011 order resolving this case. However, the nuance of the case is, is that since 2011, our attorneys have been collecting the amount of these hotel motel online excise taxes and deducting 33% of them per the fees that occurs whenever you hire plaintiff's lawyers to do much of anything. The, that current model is coming to a close. And so I've made this same presentation in several different jurisdictions. And the firm, now this is sort of on robot mode. They're not really doing much. Really, in fact, the only thing that's been done now or being done now is the accountants are looking at the amount of monies coming in from these online travel companies, and they're apportioning it to the jurisdictions appropriately pursuant to the number of hotels in the jurisdiction. So they are asking us, look, you have two options here, because the order we're currently working under ends in 2020. You can either fire us and you can go collect these monies yourself, cities and counties and everybody else that's involved, or you can retain us and we will knock our fee down to about 12.5%. And I will tell, I will tell you that most jurisdictions are taking Option D and saying, you do it, give us our check, and you can take out 12.5%. Mayor Protem, that is my recommendation, that the council approve a continuation after December 2020 at the, with the firm continuing to administer it, but at their lower rate. That's my recollection.
Any questions? Before a motion, Councilmember Cookerly?
Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 19-078.
Second.
And, and, and Councilmember Longoria?
Option B.
Thank you. The second, or the, it's actually.
Allow him to continue.
Option B was said for rhetorical purposes, but it's actually.
It's written in here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-078 from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Cookerly. Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Next item is consideration of two related agreements for purchase of realty between the City of Milton and Bolivar Avalas Alfaro Jr., trustee, Anna Maria Avalas McKay, trustee, and Esmeralda Avalas Wells for Fulton Tax Parcel Number 22446009590380 at Zero Bethany Road, 4.99 acres, and between the City of Milton and James R. Wells for Fulton Tax Parcel Number 2246009600296 at Zero Bethany Road, 32.16 acres. Parcel Number 22445008880198 at Zero Bethany Road, 35.72 acres. Parcel Number 22446009600544 at Zero Bethany Road, 3.79 acres. And Parcel Number 22462009610532 at 13522 Providence Road, 11.95 acres, all parcels containing a total of 88.61 acres, more or less, for a total combined purchase price of $5,720,000. This is Agenda Item Number 19079. I do have a public comment that I've been asked to read. The gentleman could not attend. Do you want me to do that now?
Sure.
Okay. This is from Colt Whittle at 2005 Drummond Pond Road in Milton, Georgia. I submit this comment in support of purchasing the Wells property with funds from the Green Space Bond. I cannot be here this evening to speak in person, but would like to make the following points. The Milton Green Space Advisory Committee undertook a process with the Georgia Conservancy to score potential land acquisitions, and this property was one of the highest scoring in the city. It checks all the boxes related to conservation, passive recreation opportunities, and connectivity. This is a beautiful piece of property that should be preserved for the enjoyment of all. It includes a lake that is surprisingly large. There is a creek. There are a variety of elevations and slopes. The lake is accessed via a very pretty hike from Bethany Road. This property can be enjoyed with very little investment. With the addition of some primitive hiking trails and a parking area, residents can use this property as a natural escape. This acquisition preserves some wooded view shed in the Bethany-Providence intersection area. This acquisition is located at the south end of the dirt road network and offers connectivity to the proposed Central Milton Trail as well as existing Providence Park. This acquisition prevents the eventual construction of 25-plus homes. The price is reasonable. Much of this land is highly developable under AG1, and taken alone, these areas would fetch a top price. However, some of this land is clearly not developable due to proximity to water and flood plain. The price reflects a discount because of this. In sum, acquisition of this property is in the interest of Milton's residents today and long into the future.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I know that there may be a presentation. I just want to announce for the record that Councilmember Cookerly, pursuant to, on grounds previously disclosed to the council, has recused, and I do believe that recusal is appropriate.
There. Okay. Mayor Protem and members of the council, I'm going to give you a little presentation about this property. It's, right now, we're calling it the Fields Crossroads. And for those of you who don't already know, which, we had some of our historians here, but Fields Crossroads is, that area, it's a community name that dates back to Milton County, in the same way that this is the Crab Apple Community and Birmingham is the Birmingham Community. So for the, for the time being, that's what we've referred to it as. To orient you to where this property is, it's down here where the Screen Star is, in the south central part of the city. And here, this shows the other green space that's already been acquired. The first purchase, of course, there was the earlier discussion, the former Milton Country Club in the very center of the community. And then the second purchase was the Preserve at Lackey Road, which is in the southwestern part of the city, down here. Our third purchase, which should close within the next two weeks, but isn't technically closed yet, is up here in the north central part of the city. And so, as I say, this one is down here in the south central part of Milton. This is a zoom in of the property itself. As you can see, this is Bethany Road right here. This is Providence Road. So the property is five, five parcels. I've got the acreage here. Two of them are smaller parcels, under five acres apiece. One is a medium-sized parcel, approximately 12 acres. And then two more that are large parcels, over 30 acres. The total acreage, as Sudi mentioned, was 88.61 acres. So some of the highlights of the property, well, actually, let me just say, the Green Space Committee is charged, as you know, with evaluating, prioritizing, and recommending to council properties for acquisition, based on the criteria from the ballot language and also from a resolution that this council passed in June of 2016. The criteria include water resources, natural areas, wildlife habitat. This particular property was the highest ranked property of everything that they reviewed. It scored high because it met all of these criteria, as well as having the visibility along the two road frontages, Bethany and Providence. So the water resources, as Mr. Whittle said in his public comment, there's a very large lake. It's approximately seven acres. And the, this acquisition would purchase really sort of halfway down the middle of the lake, so we would own about half of that. It's very beautiful, as you can see from these pictures. And the other, to me, much more important water resource, and it's one of the most appealing things about the property, in my opinion, is that we would own almost 1,200 feet, both sides of Cooper Sandy Stream. And that happens to be Milton's only impaired stream. You know, Georgia EPD has identified throughout the state, streams or rivers, waterways that they consider impaired. And those are, all of those waterways have identified uses. And if your, your waterway is not clean enough, it may not support that identified use. And so they have identified Cooper Sandy as a stream that does not support its, its use. And that is, as I recall, it's keeping fish alive. It's a sediment issue. And it, and it doesn't mean that the problem is here on this strip of property. It could happen before, it could happen further downstream. But it shows, it shows Milton's concern in wanting to protect Cooper Sandy Stream. So occasionally, if a river or waterway becomes impaired, or state remains impaired or becomes worse, the state can force you to do something about it. And the City of Atlanta had a consent decree a number of years ago where they had to spend $25 million acquiring waterside because they could not get a water clean. So just us purchasing this shows a real commitment to protecting this stream. So this is an image that shows the flood plains here. That provides a lot of natural area for habitat that, that needs that kind of, that kind of environment. But as you can see, the majority of the property is in fact buildable, which was one of the criteria of the committee. While I was out there taking these pictures, I ran across this Crab Apple and Trillium, and this bottom right picture is a really large freshwater mussel shell. So at least Cooper Sandy at that point is definitely clean enough to keep mussels alive. So that's a really good sign. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has a tool called IPAC, which is Information Planning and Conservation System. And you may remember this, Carter went through this at each one of our previous purchases. You can put in a property location and it'll tell you whether a threatened or endangered species may, that may be the range of its habitat. It does not in any way, shape, or form say that these creatures, this flora or fauna have been found at this location. But it's something that they like everybody to be prepared or aware of as they undergo property, projects. So it's, again, very ideal that we're conserving land that could well be habitat for threatened or endangered species. There may be a time in the future where, you know, this becomes the only place where , where things are found. And it's a pretty important work. It's, the other thing that that tells you, that same tool will tell you is migratory birds that will find habitat in this property. And it's really lovely, raw land. When I was taking those pictures, I heard a multitude of bird songs. So they were all up in the top of the canopy, so I couldn't identify them. But it is a very happy wildlife habitat. I saw deer tracks while I was out there. So it's, it's doing a good job right now, as it is, just providing wildlife habitat. So the summary, 88.6 acres. It was the highest rated, ranked of all the properties that the Milton Green Space Acquisition Advisory Committee reviewed with the assistance of the Georgia Conservancy. The purchase price, as Sudi said, was 5.72 million, and that's an average of 65,000 an acre. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have a question. The trails are currently usable.
I'm sorry?
The trails on the property are usable?
The, the property doesn't have trails, per se. There's a former, there's, there's paths where vehicles have accessed it in the past, I think, a long time ago. I think a long time ago, there may have been some logging that was done there. Um, so you can, you can follow, uh, what was obviously sort of carved out as, as a, a path. So there's a path, there's not a trail. But given how, um, natural it is, it would not be hard to probably put soft surface trails in there.
Okay. And, but there's no, there's no area for parking currently, there's no pad or anything?
Correct.
Okay. So we anticipate having to create a parking area so that our citizens can use it and, because I'd love to see it used as, you know, a stream, um, the streams for fishing and things like that.
Right.
So that would be something we'd have to look at as well, so.
Right. And I will be honest, I didn't s, look around and assess a, a parking area like with Lackey Road property. I know, um, the members of the committee looked around to see if there were places logical for parking, and, and we did not do that for this, but, um...
But we anticipate parking going in, okay.
Is that fair to say, Steve? I mean, I don't know whether there's any plans at this point.
There, there's definitely no plans, this is just came before us. Um, uh, it'll be part of the planning process. If it's connected to someplace else, maybe you'll determine that, that's the better place to park, but, uh, with, things are the way they are right now, uh, I couldn't see any other way to get there besides park there.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? All right, open for motion.
Mayor Protem, I do want to briefly, just to make sure we hit all the right points. There, there's two contracts in front of you. This is a consolidated agenda header, so there's actually two acquisition contracts. And if I could, very quickly, I'd like to start on the James Wells contract. Um, hopefully in your agenda package, you'll see that one, uh, because there are two independent ones. The contract between the City of Milton and James Wells is for the acquisition. You can see the specific parcel numbers set forth in the first paragraph of the contract, uh, 35.72 acres, 32.16, 11.95 acres, and 3.79 acres for an aggregated amount of property of 83.62 acres, at $65,000 per acre for a collective sum to James R. Wells of $5,435,300. That will be with a $10,000 earnest money payment, as well as a 60-day due diligence, uh, period. During that 60-day due diligence period, the City of Milton can get out of the contract for any reason or no reason. Uh, at that point, we'll receive a full refund of our earnest money. This also has a simultaneous closing requirement that we have to close on the other 4.99 acre parcel for this closing to, uh, be required. So we've got the one acquisition contract, and if the city council is so inclined, just to keep a nice, clear record of this, if the council is inclined to go forward this evening, I might recommend that you go ahead and make a motion on the first acquisition contracts involving James Wells for the parcels as discussed.
Okay. So the first motion is going to be on James Wells contract, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
So I will open up for a motion for that.
Uh, Mayor Protem, I move that we, um, approve the agreement for purchase of realty, um, between the City of Milton and specifically the James R. Wells component of this description.
Yep. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And that is unanimous, except for Carol has recused herself.
Mr. Mayor Protem, the next contract, uh, contains the mirror language. It is also dependent upon the closing of the James Wells, um, parcels that you just approved. This is between the City of Milton and Bolivar Avellis Alfaro Jr., trustee. I'm not going to go through all the names, they are in your, they were on the agenda header candidly, and they're in your packet. Um, this is for 4.99 acres. Uh, this is for $65,000 per acre for an aggregated purchase price of $324,350. Once again, as before, there is a 60-day due diligence period during which the City of Milton can, can get out of the contract for any reason or no reason, and there is a $10,000 earnest money requirement that if we get out during the due diligence period, the earnest money will be returned to the city. Uh, for purposes of approving the contract, again, there's multiple sellers, if you will, in addition to Bolivar. There's also Anna Marie Avellis McCaw, trustee, and Esmeralda Avellis Wells. I think if you just would reference that this is to approve the acquisition agreement for the Bolivar Avellis contract, that would be satisfactory.
Okay. Open for motion for that?
Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the purchase of realty between the City of Milton and the, the first component of this description, which is the Bolivar Avellis Alfaro Group.
Second.
Something like that.
Motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol. Any mayor and council reports? Sounds good, all right. Please first, Sarah.
A few updates with this good weather, we're able to get a lot of, uh, construction underway. Um, this week, we were able, or the past week, we were able to complete the Heritage Walk speed tables. Um, right out here, we've got three speed tables. We also did some sod improvements along some of the developed parcels on Heritage Walk and Birmingham Highway, so to upgrade that from just the seating that was done with the GDOT project. Um, next week, we should start our paving. Um, that'll start in with neighborhood streets, and then we've got a few collectors as well that will move to. Uh, we'll be putting out more information on the schedule of, of those paving projects. The gravel road quarterly maintenance is underway, and we're moving forward with a new gravel mix. Um, this time, we've got, uh, more, more gravel and less fines in that mix, so we're going to see how that, that holds up with the, the weather and the, the traffic on the gravel roads. The concept projects we have, um, the Birmingham Crossroads Mini Roundabout, GDOT's still, still getting that one kicked off, and Fremontville, Fremontville at Birmingham, um, that roundabout is, we're working through the contract with a consultant to begin design. Still have the three Hopewell Intersection projects that, all of those are roundabouts in design, that's Hopewell at Hamby, Hopewell at Thompson, and Hopewell at Bethany. Then just last week, we opened our seventh roundabout at Fremontville-Providence. That one's just in a temporary stage, um, so that the construction can take place on the, the other corners of that intersection, get the rest of the infrastructure in, and then it'll move to its ultimate location. The Crab Apple Road at Green Road, that's a GDOT project, and they got most of the, the pavement widening done last week, and that's going to be the Florida T-type intersection. And then utility work has been completed at Birmingham Highway at Batesville, and that's the left turn lane on Birmingham to turn onto Batesville. And that's all I've got.
Any questions? Thank you.
Human Resources update, what's going on in human resources? Um, we're currently working with GMA on developing a safety committee and safety policy for our employees, which will allow us to be eligible for the safety grant that GMA issues. Um, we're looking forward to, um, we're looking forward to start working on a rewrite of our personnel policies, hopefully that'll come before you in the next few months. And finally, um, hopefully you'll see much sooner, we're working on finalizing a contract for a deferred compensation provider and reaching a final agreement with them, and hopefully that'll be before you within the next couple of weeks. So that's all that I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no executive session, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, got a motion from Councilmember Moore, a second from Councilmember Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Second.